All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, just quick mention that this meeting will be recorded. And we have some amendments. I need a motion to amend the agenda to include, and I know there was a cheat sheet and I left at home, financial two. Financial action item A, I should say. And there was another one under personnel J. As well as superintendent four. You do. Very front page, very, very front.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry, I missed it on the way through. So it's personnel J. I'm sorry, financial action item A. And then superintendent. Action or non-action items four, R D.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, that was Donald then, Heather second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried, unanimously. All right. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items as listed.
So moved.
All right, Teresa, then Annie. Any discussion? But to thank Mrs. Bell for her years of dedicated service to this district. And she will be sorely missed on her retirement, but well deserved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. All right, financial action item, oh boy. Got a lot of reading to do here, Linda. All right, financial action item, adopt the following resolutions. Is this, this is all one? One thing, right, okay. All right, I'm sorry. It's all one, okay. Adopt the following resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following change orders in connection with the 2015 Capitol Project as presented to the Board at this meeting. Change order number G C dash zero zero five to the site construction contract with Bass Top Field Construction LLC for the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. To be decreased to the contract with Bass Top Field Construction LLC. And be it further resolved that the Board hereby authorizes the Board President to sign the above change order on behalf of the district. A copy of the change order will be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following change order in connection with the 2015 Capitol Project. As presented to the Board at this meeting, change order number P C dash zero zero four to the site construction contract with Condor Fire Sprinkler Company LLC for the amount of one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars to be decreased to the contract with Condor Fire Sprinkler Company LLC. And be it further result, uh, result that the Board hereby authorizes the Board President to sign the above change order on behalf of the district. A copy of the change order will be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following change order in connection with the 2015 Capitol Project as presented to the Board at this meeting. The same one I just read. That's the same one.
Hey, go to the next page.
Okay, be it resolved.
Yeah.
Okay. There we go. Yeah, I'm still.
So on the bottom of the first page.
No, I got. Yeah. That the Board of Education hereby approves the following change order in connection with the 2015 Capitol Project. As presented before this meeting, change order E C dash zero zero six to the site construction contract with DLC Electric LLC for the amount of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. To be decreased to the amount, uh, to the contract with DLC Electric LLC. And be it resolved that the Board hereby authorizes the Board President to sign the above change order on behalf of the district. A copy of this change order will be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following change order in connection with the 2015 Capitol Project as presented to the Board at this meeting. Change order number G C dash zero zero six to the site construction contract with Bass Top Field Construction LLC. For the amount of eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents to be increased to the contract with Bass Top Field Construction LLC. And be a further resolved that the Board hereby authorizes the Board President to sign the above change order on behalf of the district. A copy of the change order will be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. Whew, any emotion?
I'll make it.
All right, Donald first, hang on a second. Right, and then Annie. Any discussion?
I still have a question, why is that in double? Because it's the same thing, it's G C zero five for the same amount.
I think we just had a mistake there, right?
No, so that was the amended, part of the amended agenda, to take that piece out and to add the last change order.
Take out, take out.
In financial.
Wait, what?
All right, we are taking that part out. The highlighted part, that was the, that was, that's. Yep, okay, now I remember that, okay.
And then why we, why did we decrease?
I would assume they contractually, they save money.
There's a decrease for G C zero zero five, right?
Yeah.
And then there's an increase for zero zero six, right? Eleven thousand, so it's still like a one sixty increase total.
Yes.
That's good.
Yeah, decrease is good, so Ben, do you have any?
No, I'm gonna refer back to Deana, Deana, you wanna share with that a little bit?
Yeah, I don't have the change orders in front of me, but they all are approved by the architect and the Plumbo Group.
Okay. Saving money is good. Any, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. All right, adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education has previously established an employee benefit accrual liability reserve fund or E V L R fund. For the purpose of paying the set cost of certain employees' benefits defined as a cash payment of the monetary value of accrued and accumulated but unused and unpaid sick leave, personal leave, holiday leave, vacation time allowances in lieu of overtime compensation and other forms of payment for accrued but unliquidated time earned to find municipal employees and payable upon the termination of service. And whereas the payments were made from the district's general fund for the such employee benefits and now must be reimbursed from the E V L R fund. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board, the Board hereby appropriates and makes transfer from the employee benefit accrued liability reserve fund to the general fund in the aggregate amount of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-three cents. To repay the general fund for the payment of the employee benefits, sick vacation and personal days during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. So it's from the employee benefit accrued liability service twenty-nine thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-three cents to the general fund. Twenty-nine thousand four hundred and sixteen of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars ninety-three cents. And to be it further resolved that the Board of Education modifies the twenty twenty twenty-one general fund budgetary appropriations by the sum of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars ninety-three cents and authorizes the school business, business manager to appropriate the funds as specified in this resolution. Need a motion? Teresa, and then Donald, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained, so carried. And adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the rev, uh, the revision to the construction management contract for reconstruction at Germantown C S D as outlined in a letter dated October twenty-third, twenty twenty to the superintendent. A motion? Annie, and then second? Right, Heather second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. All right, adopt the following resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves amendment one to the executed agreement between the Germantown Central School District, uh, G C S D and C P L approved by the Germantown Central School District Board of Education on March ninth, two thousand sixteen. And signed by Tammy Calvans, but for the G C S D and David Samel for C P L for architectural services related to the Germantown Cent, uh, Central School District, twenty fifteen bond. Any motion?
Make it.
Annie, second?
I'll second.
Teresa, any discussion?
Why the amendment?
Uh, this was because of the water tank, if I'm not mistaken, because the water tank is not in yet, we had to extend the service.
Okay.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. All right, non-action item, uh, items discussion on Tech Valley. I added this to the agenda because of the letter that we received from the parent last at our last actual board meeting. Uh, and I wanted to really have discussion as to how we feel about students going to Tech Valley. A little bit of background on it, I did speak with the parent at length. You know, regarding this and their thought process and they had questions, so I did email Ben and Linda to get us some information in regards to transportation and, and all of that for Tech Valley. So that's why I, it's on the, the agenda for discussion, it's you know, like I said, open for discussion, any questions or anything that anybody has? And then I'll let you information that, you know, for transportation money-wise.
It's, um, right now for one student, it's a hundred and twenty-six eighty-four a day, a hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-four cents a day. And that's every other week's an A week. And it's per student and it's not from, it's not gonna be expense from the house to Cozelle's, it's gonna be from Cozelle's to Tech Valley is where the, uh, uh, extra amount would be. So you're looking at additional funds that you're gonna have to come up with for a student, just so everybody's aware.
Is this one student we're talking about?
It is one student, it is the student who would have been a freshman in the program, uh, we voted back at the beginning of school to eliminate Tech Valley and new, new students going into Tech Valley heavy equipment because of the transportation costs. At the beginning of the year, the parents received a phone call from the school district that does the busing from their home to Cozelle's, that their child would be on the bus, oh, and we're picking up your other daughter as well, and that's what started this, which was a mistake. And it was an honest mistake at that point in time. So the parent has reached out to us. You know, requesting that their child, the second child be allowed to go to Tech Valley, so I said.
This person already has a child at.
The oldest daughter is, is attending Tech Valley, it has been, and is still going. Um, and this, the, the second one would have, she would have been that slot this year and she would have proved to go. But then we, as a board, decided to eliminate Tech Valley when we had the budget cut. So. We can say.
What has this child been doing thus far this year?
She spent in school here. Yeah.
So, one twenty-six a day, how many days?
Deana, how many days was that? Do you remember?
For September, it was ten days. And for October, it was nine days.
So nineteen days so far.
And if, is there a contact with this company that if they all end up going remote and we still have to pay them? That kind of thing with the transportation?
Uh, that was the thing, and I believe, Linda, you said, no, right, that if our students aren't, don't go, we don't pay?
So we did not pay last year.
They paid last year.
So remember, you, you signed, there was agreements this school year. So since we have partnered with two other school districts, I would have to reach out to
Yeah.
to kind of kills to find out what the deal is there.
Okay.
But that was last year that we did not pay during, um, the shutdown.
So they have Tech Valley every other week?
I think they're probably on a hybrid schedule where they.
So, so the grade levels go at different times.
The grade levels, it will probably be A and B weeks, so that would be double the transportation because of the week we're not using it, we will be using.
Well, I don't, I don't think so, because I think it's per student, right? The transportation is per student, the.
Donald is, Donald is correct, because I think that student will go the opposite days. So, Benny.
Yeah.
I can't recall what grade her sister's in, but I'm pretty sure it's gonna be the opposite days.
So regardless, still per student, so.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, is the cost on the bus per student?
Not per run.
Or per run?
Per student, you know?
Per student, per day.
So it's per student per day, so. It would be, it would, it would be double the amount per month for the child to go.
And just so you know, for September, the total cost was one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty cents. And for October, it was one thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-six cents.
Did you get any guidance as to legally can they take them?
Yeah, that was the next.
Yeah, did Linda, you talked, you reached out to Shaw, right?
Yeah, so I reached out to our legal counsel and they have not gotten back to me about that yet. It would be setting precedents, just so you know. Because, you know, there are gonna be times when probably a parent can't transport the child, so then what do we do? We have to provide transportation for our students.
And, and that's the part that worries me the most.
I don't think we have the money. We've cut staff. You know, and now we're gonna do this.
And we don't know what's gonna happen in the future.
For one person, no good.
I mean, even back then, we, we stopped it for a reason and in my eyes, it hasn't gotten any better, it's, the meter is going to the opposite end, so I, I, in all good faith, I can't say yes, let's do it. And then again, it started with, what if we have to base this next year, you know, disrupt her? She has to begin. We told people for the next year.
I, I think the, the question for me is the would be from the lawyers with legality, I mean, I know it would be, you know, the idea of precedent setting. But that, that to me, I would like to hear from the lawyers to see what their their interpretation of transportation is, and if we, you know, if there's contracts that we can make with the parents and stuff like, you know. I don't know, but that, that they would be responsible, that would be, now, keep in mind, Tech Valley does come with a cost. I mean, it's, it's not a huge cost, it's not, you know, and we do get state aid, but it is spread out over five years and it's, it is a cost per student to go to Tech Valley as well. Deana, do you know what that is right off the top of your head?
I'm sorry, I don't, but I can get that information for you.
So.
Between ten to twelve thousand dollars just transportation over a year.
Yeah.
Plus the cost.
It's, it's a, yes. Like I said, well, at this point, we'll keep things. Right, I, again, I can't testify you know, spending that extra money right now that we don't know, especially with COVID testing and all the other things that we're gonna be faced with here in the next
period.
I mean, it's a you know. All right, so I said, just re, still reach out to our lawyers to just, to double check, just to make sure. All right. Thank you. All right, lost where I was. All right, we're now, action item. Adopt the following resolution, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby extends the long-term leave replacement appointment of Cheryl O'Dell to the remainder of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year ending June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Any motion?
I'll make it.
Donald, then second? All right, Teresa, a second, any discussion?
What issue?
Uh, I believe it's math teacher, right?
Yes, math teacher.
Anything else? All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, so carried. Right, and adopt the following resolution, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Jacqueline Pooters, I guess Pooters, I'm just making sure, to full-time RN, the school nurse position, step one at salary of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars prorated with the probationary period beginning November nineteenth, twenty twenty through November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Any motion? Donald, then Heather, any discussion?
I have one question, what happens to the people that we had employed as temporary nurses?
That's a great question, so, um, the plan right now is to do a transition because of the prob, prorated amount. And they're gonna need to help assist for the first couple of weeks. And then they'll, they'll be on, uh, be able to assist as necessary.
So they're gonna be more like on call than.
That's correct.
Okay. Welcome.
All right. Well, hold on, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried, thank you. That's really what we wanna say, thank you, thank you, thank you, welcome aboard. All right, and then adopt the following resolution, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education hereby appoints Jacqueline Pooters as health coordinator stipend twenty-five hundred dollars.
I'll make that a motion.
Second, Heather? All right, Donald, then Heather? Any discussion? And this is a position that's like mandated by the state, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Do they give us money back for it?
That was a loaded question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. All right, thank you very much. It is a huge
Yeah.
relief to us as a, as a school board. Superintendent, non-action items.
All right, first off, uh, I hope, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving this weekend. Just so everybody knows, a couple of things, parent-teacher conferences are happening tomorrow, we have an early dismissal, eleven-thirty, I just wanna keep everybody informed of that. And I do wanna talk about these discussion items first, the Questar three topic, every year you meet with, um, Dr. Cruz to discuss things about Questar and the programs they have, is there anything that you want me to let her know that she, you want, you want her to discuss about in the spring? Trying to get things in advance here.
This is the toughest question for us every year. What do you wanna hear about? What haven't we talked about? Yeah, I guess, yeah, that would be a good topic, virtual learning, what they can provide for us.
Yeah.
I would like to know how their programs have adjusted. You know, with our, our requirements, things like that, that would be a, any, you know, like cosmetology has hours. You know, how are they gonna, you know, midst all of this?
A lot of the stuff, they can't be virtual.
They, I mean, they've been in session from day one. Um, but that, that, I've this update on programming, I guess, maybe.
Do they have a nursing and C N A program?
They have, they don't have a nursing program anymore, but they do have a, like a, a C N A. It's seniors go to a senior. Yeah, it's like a one-year program, I believe. That gives them some ideas.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll share that with them.
Unless they have something they can offer us.
I, I will, I will be talking to Dr. Cruz about that. The, uh, next item here is, uh, we've been, you've been meeting twice a month as a board. And now that the Capitol Project's at its final stages, I guess I'm just opening up the idea of not having to meet twice a month, especially in November, how are we gonna, or December, it's not gonna happen anyway because of the holidays. I'm just putting it out to the board to have a discussion and, you know, let me know what your thoughts are.
I think as the Capitol Project winds down, we probably have no reason to.
Right.
Unless something comes up that we have to follow.
Right.
I would like to just, maybe before our December meeting, go through the building again, though.
Absolutely.
Just to see it. Because it should be, it should be done except for the stage, we can't get on the stage, obviously.
Right.
But I would like to see it
Yeah.
cleaned up and pretty.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it cleaned up and pretty yet.
That is very doable, and by the way, it looks great.
Well, we don't have a second meeting this month anyways because of Thanksgiving. We, well, I was, we would do it the, the December meeting, yeah.
The day of December meeting?
Yeah.
That would be fun, you should come a half hour, an hour early.
That'd be fine, it won't take too long.
I know, I know, that's for you.
Yeah, I, well, I'm, even if we did it at the end of the meeting, I mean, you know, just, just for us to walk through it.
Driving from work to here now.
Yeah, just, just to go through it, not, I don't think it has to be anything.
Benny, can we just make a note, the next board meeting, we'll have a walkthrough?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
I have a daughter just going to have me, gonna give me the virtual floor.
We should do it, there's no reason why we can't do it at the end of the meeting.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's gonna be dark all the time, so it doesn't really matter.
I'm only gonna go home, watch TV till one, two o'clock in the morning.
The next thing I wanted to discuss with everybody is the in-person versus or public attendees come into, uh, public meetings. What, even with the administrative team, because we're seeing an uptick in this COVID in the area, we, uh, we're doing everything Zoom or electronically, even though we're in the same building. Um, and the purpose of that is, if one of us gets sick, we could take out everybody. And if we lose our administrative team, just using an example, that would take out our whole school system. So one of the things that we could do, and it's just out there, do you, do we stay coming in like this when things are getting worse out there, or do we wanna kind of lay back and just use the Zoom app for a time period so it declines back down? Something just to discuss and think about.
Do you wanna set a threshold that if Columbia County could keep it down and whatever, as we become magical?
I think that you know, if we get to that point, the school will shut down, and as soon as school shuts down, we'll definitely go to Zoom, I mean, if we have to shut this, the building down.
What's the threshold for that?
Well, that's in the levels, and that's going into my next, um, thing, so we can, we can combine this. The levels that we, I sent out to you, um, and you also got from the attorneys. If we hit the threshold of yellow, what they say, yellow zone, which is the micro clusters that they're talking about across the state. If Columbia County becomes yellow within our zip codes, then what we have to do is get twenty percent of our student staff in the building in person, but have to get tested within two weeks. The concerns, and I'm just putting them out there, and across the whole region is getting the test, who's gonna provide tests? And, um, who, how are we gonna choose who's getting tested? And then after that, how are we gonna monitor who's been tested? So these are items that we are being discussed. The, we discussed with the Board of Health in the, this morning, that they have two thousand tests in Columbia County. And they're rapid, what they call Avid Rapid Tests. And the, the problem with the two thousand tests is you got Hudson that has so many people that have to be tested twenty percent. Basically, you gotta do it every week, after the first two weeks, you gotta do it every week. So in five weeks, you basically got every kid and staff member tested. But what if I'm a parent that doesn't want my kid to get tested? So they can't come to this building. Or I have a staff member that doesn't wanna get tested. Or I have a staff member that doesn't want to get tested. So these are things we're legally looking at. Um, and it's not an easy situation, and across the board, the superintendents in the Questar three are really having a hard time with this. Um, how do we hold this accountability?
Is the testing mandatory?
The testing would be mandatory if we want to have in-school, in-person schooling.
Yeah, I read something that if, if, if you don't do it, you could be penalized.
And we could be penalized for monetarily from the state, yes.
But they're not going to pay for the tests.
Well, the tests are going to be free. The tests are free. They're, they're already in possession at the, at the, um,
Two thousand of them isn't gonna be enough.
Two thousand is not gonna be enough for all Columbia County. But we're working with, uh, the Bosse's and also with, um, Department of Health. The nurses are going to be trained as a preliminary, so that if we do decide to get the tests and do it in-house, we're having the nurses do it. We're also asked to the Department of Health to send us a sample, um, letter to the parents to get permission. Um, and then we would have to work with individual unions at that point and make sure it works through.
It's the average, it's the average for the finance now?
Yes.
It's, it's a simple.
It's a simple test, it's quick, right?
For the brain.
It's, yeah.
It's a card.
Yep, that's exactly what it is. Yeah.
How accurate it is.
Probably it's an antigen test. Antigen tests have a twenty to forty percent false negative rate. What about false positive? Not, not so much. Yeah, and if you have a positive, then you have to do the PCR too.
Nose one is nasty.
It's a very, very high false negative rate.
So what, what are we doing right now if a student?
Good question.
Presents, present, or presents with a symptom at school, they go to the nurse.
Yep.
We send them home.
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have a requirement that, that, and before they can come back, they have to have a doctor's note for being tested?
It, well, it all depends if they're showing symptoms.
Right, so.
If they're showing symptoms, they have to get tested by the department.
Get tested before they can come back.
We let the Department of Health know.
Okay.
That the student, I'll give you an example, we had a student that tested positive just this week, and you guys just, and I communicated with you.
I told everybody.
We had, we had a student that was on campus, and, and it was in a secondary building, that was tested positive on Saturday, was here Thursday, Friday. Had symptoms, tested positive on Saturday, you go back forty-eight hours. Then all those people that were in contact have to quarantine because they're what they call a level B contact. Level B contact means that you have been, um, in proximity or contact with somebody that is positive. So what we did is we had to see what staff was involved with this child or in proximity with this child that, that day or the day before. And those people had to go and get quarantined. The board of health was fully aware, we sent them to contact tracing. And all the students that were involved in that pod for the secondary had to also get, um, sent home, quarantined, and the department health is notified with their address, phone numbers, and names. The problem was is that we, because it was twelve staff members in the secondary building, we could not run in-person schooling with that many people out. That's what we ran into. So we had to make a quick drastic decision, and, you know, safety's the number one priority for us. But we had to make that decision in a quick manner, especially when losing twelve people in our building, so.
And they all have to quarantine for two weeks, or can they come back and they test after a week?
Because of testing could bury, and correct me if I'm wrong, nurse. The, the, there's some people may not show any symptoms at all, but some people may show symptoms, but if they do show symptoms, then they're told to go get tested. The problem with getting tested too early, you may not show any, any signs, am I correct? So.
Primarily actually test positive between the five and seven.
Five and seven, yeah. Yeah.
So between the five and seven, the optimal times to test positive.
That's correct.
And if you test, some people, if you test too late, they will test negative, but some people will not convert to positives for up to fourteen days. So which is why the quarantine time is fourteen days, and if you were sick, you're only ten days after your symptoms resolve. So someone who was sick could actually get out of quarantine before somebody was in the classroom.
So going back to the level micro cluster, if we become a yellow designation in this, in zip codes, the ability to test all the students, twenty percent of our students' staff, because now they made it staff as well. Staff can't come in the building if we do remote unless they test. And you still got to do twenty percent. So it, it, it makes it very difficult to be able to continue the in-person at that point. So we're praying that we don't become yellow, and if you become orange, it's even worse. You gotta shut down for four days. You have to do deep clean, and then you gotta do twenty-five percent every week. It becomes very, very hectic. The, the numbers that we have right now, if we edit all kids, staff, is about four hundred and thirty. So you're looking at about eighty-six tests at twenty percent. But you also got Hudson. To Connaught Hills, you know, all these other schools going to be in the same, same boat.
And much larger schools.
Yep, and Ichabod.
Yeah.
Maybe they should contract with Columbia Green Nursing Program and.
It's a test.
On the, these rapid, that sounds, yeah.
So, not to be a bearer of bad news, but I think you should be aware of what's going on, and if decisions are made from the school district, um, it's because of the situation that we've been handed. You will be informed.
So have we heard anything back from any families with concerns about the one student who got tested?
The actual student's family or others' families? I've had some phone calls, but very minimal. Um, so.
People aren't going into a, like a complete panic.
No, it's been, it's been very well communicated. Our team did a very good job of communicating. Uh, I think the robo calls are a very big help. And the, the letters I'm posting on, online, the please check the website, has been very helpful. And any phone calls, I'm taking them. The principal's been great, taking phone calls, but they've been very minimal. And we just wanted, especially the younger, um, the elementary students and parents. They're, you know, why is it okay that, what, you know, we're in the same building? It had nothing to do with, uh, outbreak. This was one student, it just happened to have contact with a lot, with a lot of staff members. That's really what the problem was.
Well, that's good that people are, are in such panic.
Yes, it's been very positive, actually.
That's good. Also going forward, though, it sounds like there needs to be some restructuring so that there is not that much contact.
Unfortunately, in the high school, I don't know how you're pointing to possibly.
The other, if we did it the other way, and I've been in both situations, if we did it the other way, we would have had a lot more kids being affected.
I just, because every, because I only teach social studies, I don't teach everything else. So to, to me, for me to sit in a pod with a group of kids.
You can't give them the.
I can't keep them, I can't, you know, elementary is a different beast, you know, than, than high school, whereas, you know, you, you just, like, you don't want a lot of the social studies teachers teaching math, so. Same. Um, so it's, it's, it's just, it's just gonna be one of those things that's just gonna happen.
And, and, and just so you know, it's not, we're not alone. New Lebanon had to close down, Avril Park had to close down.
Mass on lockdown for the.
Maris, Lansenberg, second grade had to shut down. I mean, it's, and just today, East Green Bush shut down. So, and New York City just shut down.
And if it shut down, it, it means it, it just.
It's just remote.
Your virtual.
Yeah, you're not, you're not closing. Yeah, you're still doing remote. So that's, that's a good thing, is that we are planned and we have a plan in place. So it was very smooth today for the secondary teachers and, and the students. Because they went through the spring where it was chaos, they had a good plan walking in, and, um, that's great planning by our administrative team.
Thanks, thank goodness we have the structure in place. It could have been completely different.
It was, yeah.
Thank you for the communication.
You're welcome.
It was great to have communication before people are calling me on the phone.
Good. It's, that, that's important, and it's important to the staff as well.
Um, that's all I have. So the, the board meeting, well, let's go back to C for a second.
Yes.
So discussion in person and or public tennis, we have been given the okay by formal to extend to January thirtieth.
There's that elevator.
That was weird. It just started by itself.
It's, 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 it doesn't every time we have, it's gotta be a timer thing or something. Anyways. Welcome. You've met the ghost, you know, um.
Former board member coming.
Yeah, it's a former board member, no, uh, the, um, January thirtieth, right, is what the extension, I believe, has been to for, for in-person, uh, public attendance of.
Thirty, third, third.
I thought it was the thirtieth.
I think it was the thirtieth, but I'm not a hundred percent positive. So we have the ability to extend what we're doing now without the public in attendance. Um, and comments and stuff like that. So that, that's, you know, the thing, you know, where everybody's online, they can listen, they can hear, but no public comments. Now, keep in mind, we do not ever have to have a public comment thing at our board meetings, so it's not, um, thing, and I think for safety at this point, we're trying to bring people in and having to contact trace and having to take temperatures and to do all of those things. Um, my personal opinion right now, especially right now, is that we keep the board meetings the way we're doing them. And I gotta say honestly, there's gonna probably be a time when we'll, we'll probably have to go remote.
Yeah. I mean, we've done both.
Yeah. Which is fine.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
So we'll keep things as, as is for now. All right, anything else?
That's all I have at this time.
Anything else for anybody else? I did get a lovely thank you note from Sue. Did she get it to everybody? Okay, good, okay. I, I figured she would, but.
How are you feeling, Ben?
How am I feeling?
Yeah.
Fantastic. I'm loving this.
Getting hit with all this stuff.
Yeah, I'm not, um, I have, um, a lot of experience with things that hit the fan real quick. Um, I had to, look.
And you, you fit right in here.
So, I mean, I had, I, I mean, I had a kid die in my school, so I had to make reactions real quick, and when I was in Charleston, so, um, this kind of stuff, when it hit, I knew what to do. I grabbed my team. And we worked very closely as a team, and we made decisions together, and then once we had the kind of decisions made, we started moving on them. Once the decisions were finalized, I brought the whole, um, emergency team together. And we sat down and I, and went through everything that we did, and I asked them, is there anything else that we need to do or we missed? So it was very communicative, it was very supportive, everybody was part of the process, and it was, it was extremely well done. Have we, are we gonna learn from our mistakes? Is there, here and there, we could have done differently? Absolutely, but in the, in the overall, it went very well.
I thought it was kind of funny that you've been superintendent for like, what, four hours, and I got a phone call.
Yeah.
I was like, oh, that's a good start.
Yeah, my first day.
What do you want? All right, so far, so good. I haven't heard anything bad yet. All right. Uh, Lynda, you said I got stuff to sign? How do you want to do it?
Yes, but if you want, um, I can pick it up, and then you can stop at my house if you want. I could put it on my porch, we could do that all, I'll leave the pen by the door. With the folder, it's totally up to you, however you want to do it.
Um,
right now, it's at school. It's in my office.
In your office?
Okay.
Yeah. I can just go up and do it now. That'd be easier.
Okay.
All right. All right, I need a motion to adjourn. Heather, then.
Donald's second.
All right, Donald's second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose, abstain, so carry.
We owe you money.
You do owe me money.
She said you were paying for everybody.
Forty-two.